Welcome, everyone. Apologize that we're a few minutes late. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, September 18. I'll ask the city clerk to call the role.
Councilmember Bushy is absent. Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yorenz Gulati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. Four of us are here. We met in closed session and I'll turn to the city attorney to see if there's any reportable action.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So welcome. We're glad you're here if you're in person or listening in virtually. As always, thank you to staff, many who are here for all the incredible work that you do day in and day out. So for many of you who've been to a meeting, you know, we like to start with a few comments. And tonight I'm going to base them on the world beyond our city borders and take a moment to address the significance of Masa Amini's story and its relevance to us. I was urged to take this moment by a local resident who immigrated to San Rafael from Iran and shared the importance of the September 16th date as it was the anniversary of the death of Masa Amini. She was a Kurdish Iranian woman who died while in custody of the Iranian morality police. Masa Amini's experience serves as a reminder of our nation's fundamental principles of freedom and human rights. As a nation built by immigrants, we are deeply connected to individuals like Masa, who embody the spirit of hope and resilience. Recognizing her here tonight shows my support for Women, Life, Freedom Movement, which is a call for freedom for women, all women in the world, without any political or biased agenda. As this resident eloquently wrote to me, "Women, life, freedom is absolutely the most beautiful and precious cause any country and any society can fight for." So thank you for taking this moment to recognize Masa Amini with me. We also like to include a land acknowledgement. The one I'm going to read has been provided by the Federated Indians of the Great Rancharia. And outside of me reading this acknowledgement, the partnership continues and the work continues with the tribe to take actions that are most important to them. We acknowledge that the present day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Kosmewak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancharia. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. I will turn to the city clerk. She'll describe how people can participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube where members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171 and using the meeting ID 860-61905675 and pressing *9 to raise their hand for comment. Or they can watch and comment directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and they can use the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties at all, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanofel.org. Display it on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed caption for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's open time for public expression. I did receive a card and it's okay if you didn't write a card. You can still come down, but we will start with someone who submitted a card, Miriam Silver. Welcome. Welcome, Miriam. Do I need to pull this down?
Yes.
Maybe pull it down a little bit so we can hear. Oh, that's okay. That's okay. You can just hold it.
I broke it.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Silver and I would like to speak to the issue of fire safety and defendable space. I appreciate that the city has been vigilant in making homeowners aware of the dangers of fire and requiring preventative measures that will protect our city. Thanks to the explanation of the city attorney, I understand the legal restrictions that have allowed for dangerous situations to persist. I live at 6 Brinuar Drive and my apartment abuts the west side of the driveway at Falkirk. I spoke to the Fire Marshal's Office after the recent fire at the campsite, which occurred directly under my bedroom window. And he too explained the legal restrictions on camping. After the temporary restraining order is lifted, if the court determines that the city is unable to enforce setback limits, I respectfully request that the grassy area west of the parking lot be fenced off to provide defensible space and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Anyone else in the chambers like to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yeah, come down. Here, we're just dealing with the microphones. Here we go.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for the hard work you do, especially after a long day. My name is Jack Wilkinson. I live in Terolinda. I've lived in San Rafael for about 45 years. And I was just going through the agenda today and it occurred to me, I looked at our budget and I say that we've got an $11 million shortfall. We've got a deficit. Budgets are very important to me. I can't run negative budgets. It's called debt. My only question is, what are you planning to do about it? Are you going to adjust next year's spending to avoid having a shortfall? Are you going to find ways to increase revenue? How are we going to do it? And how are we going to pay for the $11 million? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And as you noted, that is on our agenda later this evening. So we will be sure to answer that question and more. So if there's any comments on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Jonathan Freeman. The issue of teens and tweens on e-bikes is quite concerning. We've already had some deaths in the last year, I think one in San Rafael just recently. I'm working with a variety of different folks to see if we can get some enforcement. Specifically, I would like to prohibit Class II bikes, which can go up to 20 miles per hour and which have a throttle. I'd like to have kids under 16 from disallowed to ride on those. That's the first thing. The second thing is that, I'm blanking on it. Oh, I know what it is. There are some e-bikes which can be sold and bought on the market where you can actually disable that throttle and they're advertised as such. And I think that the city and the county and other cities in Marin ought to ban those. These bikes, I think, cost over $4,000 or $5,000. But if you can disable that and go faster than 20 and we can perhaps save some lives. The experience I have, or injuries, the experience I have with this is that one of the groups I work with is called Inspirit and we give money to people with quadriplegia so they can stay in their own homes because they have to go below income. We don't want any more clients. We don't need it. I also do work with E-Bike Access to get onto Matt's Hand with E-Bikes. And the last one is with Don Conney's, what used to be called the Marin Youth Court and is now Youth Transforming Justice. And I do a lot of work with youth there and mostly kids of color. And we really want to keep those kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And our next B-PAC Bicycle Ped Advisory Committee is on October 4th. And so we definitely welcome both your input as well as the community's input on that subject. So thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Not seeing anyone. We'll turn to our online virtual community to see if anyone has any comments on items not on tonight's agenda.
I do have one hand raised.
Hi. My name is Pam Reeves and thank you for this time to speak with you. We need your help to continue our important work to fight climate change. And your important work that you already started. On January, I mean, July 18th, you passed a fantastic ordinance to prohibit the use of gas leaf blowers that went into effect October 1st, 2022. No law works unless it is enforced. I could cite many examples that public health would corroborate. I know I said that word wrong. Such as flavored vaping, such as speeding on our streets, not stopping at stop signs. But what's wrong with this ordinance is there's no enforcement for a leaf blower, no gas blower. Because it's the only way we can enforce it now is to have neighbor call out other neighbors. And this is just not good for our neighborhood community. I could call, I could knock on the door. I've done that. People have gotten outraged with me. I am not going to do that anymore. But there's no enforcement. So please, please ask your public works people or whatever enforcement there is, find out a way to educate, but to follow through with actual enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. All closed. The open time for public expression and we'll have city manager and council member reports and I will turn to city manager Leavich.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just have a few more exciting events coming up to share with you in the community. So Marin Sanitary Service is hosting their annual customer appreciation day this Saturday, September 24th from 9:00 to 2:00 at their facility at 535 Jacobi Street. There'll be classes and learning opportunities about composting, recycling and a guided tour of the facility. That's something they do every year, so that's really exciting. We also have annual hops and vine stroll in downtown San Rafael, which is coming up on Saturday, the 30th. We don't have a council meeting again until October, so I'm going to forecast the next couple of weeks of events. That's from 2:00 to 6:00 on Fourth Street from Lincoln to the West End. So there'll be breweries, taprooms, businesses doing tastings and in their establishments. You can get more information to purchase tickets at downtownsanofel.com. We have two movies in the park coming up this Friday, the 22nd. Is Super Mario Brothers in Spanish at Pickleweed Park. And also Friday, the 6th, Monsters University at Terolinda Park. Before the movie, around 5:00, city staff are on hand passing out free snacks, snow cones, popcorn, cotton candy, that sort of thing to learn more about city services. And the movie starts 15 minutes after sunset. We also have open applications for our vacancies on our boards, commissions and committees, including the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee, which the deadline is this Friday, the 22nd. The others are online and available at cityofsanofel.org/boards-commissions. Interviews for those will be held in October. That's all I had for tonight.
Thank you so much. And I'll turn to my colleagues and I'll start with the vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. It's been very busy two weeks. So there is a lot of things happening. So I had the pleasure to attend the Bret Hart Grad Sale two weekends ago and also the non-labor picnic. So there were so many families coming and it's really nice to see after my kids are now in college or graduated from college, to see so many new babies and they're still playing in the same playground. So it was really exciting to be there. I attended the Building Bridges for Marin Housing Solutions. So thank you so much to our community members that they organized this event, talking about like the shortage of very low-income housing. And I know Mayor Kate was there as well. And it was just like, I guess the summary is like, we really need to collaborate between, you know, developers and nonprofits and government and trying to figure out a solution because it's definitely challenging. So also attended our Green Our Futures San Rafael Tree some more. And I'm actually going to let council member Hill to talk about it because he was sponsoring the event. Let's see. I also attended the Porch Fest event on Sunday and that was amazing. So many people were there. I especially saw also the fire, police, library and recreation. They had amazing attendance and it was really nice to see the different bands with all sorts of music from like country music, rock. And I was coming from actually the 10th Salvadorian Independence Festival. So it was really great to see over 3,000 people celebrating the independence from El Salvador with a lot of Latin music and then going to the Porch Fest. So it was great. Like I felt like really like a citizen of the world. And I especially want to recognize the countries of Central America, especially Guatemala, El Salvador and also Mexico for their Independence Day from Spain nevertheless. And I want to recognize the value of our hardworking neighbors providing economic, cultural and social contribution to the wonderful community that we have here in San Rafael. And the festival that I attended on Sunday really created an incredible, you know, atmosphere of harmony and respect. And again, it was like over 3,000 people, amazing pupusa. So it was very busy, but really, really nice to be part of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. A lot of activities happening out in the community. District 4 held its community meeting for the Police Accountability and Advisory Commission? Commission? Committee? Committee? And it was really nice to be able to have people from the community, from the area, be able to come and visit and provide some input on that. Attended the Marin Senior Fair and the San Rafael Chamber Business Showcase was also at the Building Bridges for Marin Housing Solutions, which talked about also not only the need for more housing, but also initiatives that are happening across the state. Bafa, Bay Area Housing for affordability. And also Porch Fest. So it was great. Porch Fest was really nice considering last year was very wet and rainy. It was nice to have a really great year of people out in the community and seeing so many. So that was it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I was at Porch Fest as well. I think we all were. The only thing I would add is in addition to library and rec and fire, I saw the San Rafael Police Department there manifested in Sergeant Mathis, which was great, helping folks who got lost in their cars and make sure they got their way out safely. And then we also, also a great thank you to Public Works for ensuring that the streets were closed and on time and then reopened later in the day on a Sunday. So thank you, of course, all staff for being present. I would call out that there was a great group of ukulele players who were there for at least an hour. It was really wonderful listening to that. And then as Vice Mayor Yorenz Gulati indicated, there was a San Rafael Tree Group event that was sponsored last Thursday, September 14th in the chambers. I was proud to sponsor that. It brought a lot of clarity to what the process is from tree inventory and the importance of the tree inventory to all the subsequent considerations based on a full tree inventory, as well as clarifications on the healthfulness of trees and that they have a life cycle. So I was grateful to the San Rafael Tree Group for organizing a great panel of folks occupying every seat here on the dais. And that's my report.
Thank you. As you know, I'm your representative on TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin. We did have a meeting last week. First of all, they need crossing guards. So if you're interested in becoming a crossing guard, do reach out to TAM. They are incredibly important to getting school kids safely to school and they don't have enough of them. We talked about three different big projects. One is a 101 580 interchange. They've gone through the planning part and the next step is the environmental phase. That will be a full update we'll be giving at the TAM meeting next week, which is on Thursday. The other area where there's been improvements is the Bellum off-ramp improvements. Caltrans approved design exceptions because we're really constrained by that site. It took them five years, just going to say that. But they did approve it. So we're going to celebrate that they approved it. And then finally, the 101 interchange. So TAM looked at, with Caltrans, about a dozen interchanges from top to bottom in Marin County. And of, they chose three of them to work on. San Rafael received one of those designations. It's at the Freitas Civic Center Interchange. So they'll be looking at everything, how people get on the freeway, get off of the freeway. The timeline, not surprising, is five years. It's going to take a while. But you can stay involved and up to date by going to their website, which is www.101study.com. So stay tuned. We'll give you updates over the next couple of years on that one. I was honored with TAM as well as with representative from Canal Alliance to speak at Marin Academy. They had a Sustainable Cities Panel. Boy, they asked some tough questions. High school students these days, very impressive. We had a Safe Roots to School meeting. And Safe Roots to School is how do you get kids out of cars, parents out of cars, and get them walking and riding? So they really focused on increasing participation really coming out of the pandemic. And this is the first meeting at the beginning of the school year. There was the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce Showcase. The Vice Mayor Yorenz Gulati was both there at her own booth at Slide Ranch as well as walking around. And Councilmember Kurtz was there and it was a great way to mix and chat with a lot of our business members. The Multicultural Center of Marin had an open house that same evening. It was a very busy couple of weeks. Porch Fest, I want to also add my accolades and thank Gina Silvestri as well as the Gerstel Park Neighborhood Association. This is truly a neighborhood event and it wouldn't happen if it wasn't for all of their enthusiasm and leadership. And then finally, there's a fantastic advocacy group called Latinas in Power. And they celebrated and honored our own Vice Mayor Yorenz Gulati for being the first Hispanic on the San Rafael City Council. And it was an incredible event and a luncheon and really brought forward all the great work that the Vice Mayor is doing. So, and we have pictures. They were great. So thank you as always for what we do on the dais, but what we do out in the community. And with that, we will accept public comment on either the city manager or council member reports. If you're so interested in commenting, right now I'll look to the chambers to see if there's anyone. Not seeing anyone who'd like to comment. Is there anyone online who'd like to comment on the? and really brought forward all the great work that the Vice Mayor is doing. So, and we have pictures. They were great. So thank you, as always, for what we do on the dais, but what we do out in the community. And with that, we will accept public comment on either the city manager or council member reports, if you're so interested in commenting. Right now, I'll look to the chambers to see if there's anyone. Not seeing anyone who'd like to comment. Is there anyone online who'd like to comment on the reports?
I'm seeing no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I will open the public comments. So this is the consent agenda, of which we have four items. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Anyone online?
I'm seeing no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
The consent.
Sorry. Deconsent.
Okay, moved in second. In, I will call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorin's Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 4-0. We always love special presentations. And I know Craig will come up here shortly. As you're making your way up here, it is about the youth art exhibit, Fair Housing for All. And it's a new youth exhibit that is literally in our lobby. I can give a little background. Alexis, are you going to give a little background to it?
I will, yes.
Okay, you will. Then I will turn it over to you. Welcome, Alexis.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Alexis Captainian, Housing Analyst in the Community Development Department. And I am so pleased to introduce Fair Housing for All, the youth art exhibit that opened today at City Hall. This is the first project reviewed and approved by the city's Public Art Review Board, and we thank the board for their feedback and support of this temporary exhibit. Earlier this year, the San Rafael City Council adopted an eight-year housing plan called the Housing Element. And one of the plan's four overarching goals is to further fair housing. Part of how we advance fair housing is by spreading awareness of and information about the laws that protect against housing discrimination. The artwork that the students have created does exactly that. The exhibit will be up for three months in the main lobby at City Hall, where community members can stop by to view the students' work. Thank you to everyone involved, to the student artists at Laurel Dell Elementary School, to Cheryl Bus, Creative Director for Y Plan Elementary, who collaborated with the city, assembled the proposal and was here last Friday installing the exhibit, and to Craig Verme, Assistant Director of Library and Recreation, who shepherded the application through the city process. We're fortunate tonight to also be joined by, to be joined by Cheryl Bus and also Suzanne Joyall of Youth and Arts, and Catherine Ross Perry from the Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So welcome. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to the project team to say a few words.
Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us. My name's Suzanne Joyall, and I'm with Youth and Arts. And I've had the pleasure of working with Cheryl Bus for the last eight years at Laurel Dell. She has been instrumental in helping me develop our Imagining Friendship and Community Program. It's a demonstration project that we've been doing at Laurel Dell for many years. Grades TK to II use the arts to explore social and emotional wellness. And thanks to Cheryl's expertise, grades three through five use aspects of design thinking to help students envision and design for their own future. I just want to mention that this year, because of our wonderful partnership with Youth and Arts Heads Up and San Rafael City School District, every student in grades TK through fifth at San Rafael City Schools is getting 30 weeks of arts education. It's pretty wonderful. As an arts educator with many years of experience working with students, I know that students will engage longer and care more deeply in anything they're doing when the work has personal importance. And that's what Cheryl's contribution to the third graders at Laurel Dell is so important. Thank you. And here's Cheryl.
Thank you, Suzanne. Welcome, Cheryl.
And hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Cheryl Bus. I'm a San Rafael resident. And for the past eight years, I've been working with the San Rafael schools, like Suzanne said. And a collaboration with UC Berkeley's Y Plan stands for Youth Plan, Learn, Act Now, and Youth and Arts. And during that time, architects and planners on our team have gone in and introduced third through fifth grade students to issues related to the built environment in our community. And the children have taken on challenges such as new school design, sea level rise, affordable housing, reimagining the Northgate Mall, and even the San Rafael 2040 General Plan, which they contributed to, and the 2023 Housing Element. So we've had them really engaging in some serious issues. And they've tackled them with a lot of very serious challenges. They've tackled them with a lot of imagination, a lot of optimism, but also they've really dealt with it in a real way. You know, they've really grappled with the real constraints. This year, 50 third-grade students at Laurel Dell Elementary worked with attorneys from HUD's Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity to take on the question. Here's the question. This is, third graders took this on. How can we inform our communities about housing fairness laws that protect people from discrimination based upon race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status and ability? Big, big question. And the third graders tackled it with help from the attorneys from HUD and enforcers from HUD. And the children learned about how people are protected by federal law, which was a big deal, just that you can get introduced to attorneys and law, as well as discrimination, a lot of big concepts. But what third graders are experts at is knowing what's fair. So fair housing really resonated with them. So as part of the project, the students created the work that you're going to see in the lobby, including drawings, models, plus a book that has eight chapters. Each chapter of the book features a story about members of one of the protected groups and who felt that they were being discriminated against, how those people found out about their legal rights and where they went to get help enforcing the law. So I know Craig's going to introduce whether you get to go out, when you get to go out and see the book. But I would like to introduce Catherine Ross Perry, who will tell you how attorneys and investigators at HUD are using the children's work as part of their education and outreach efforts. So thank you all for inviting us.
Thank you, Cheryl. Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Catherine Ross Perry. I am the Enforcement Division Director for HUD's Region Nine Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity. And I'm really thrilled to be here tonight on behalf of HUD. We wanted to engage in this collaboration with Y Plan from UC Berkeley, Youth and Arts, and the Laurel Dell students because we wanted to increase the messaging about fair housing laws in the community for both home seekers, tenants, homeowners, as well as housing providers, insurance companies, lenders who offer home loans about fair housing rights and about their fair housing obligations. And we knew that the students from Laurel Dell, with their creativity, would be able to help us get this message across. We also wanted that message to include information about how people can file complaints with HUD if they think that they have been discriminated against under the Fair Housing Act or one of the other laws that we enforce. And those are laws that prohibit discrimination based on the categories that Dr. Bus mentioned, race, religion, color, national origin, sex, disability and familial status. So I have to say, mission accomplished because the kids' message really is getting out there. I mean, besides the exhibit that everyone will see when they come into San Rafael City Hall now, the students wrote an article for the Marin IJ about the project and fair housing. We created a video about the whole project that hopefully will be up soon on our website. The children's book, both the physical book that's on display here and the digital copy that we made, which is narrated by children, was on display last month at the HUD Policy Conference in Denver, where it was seen by hundreds and hundreds of people. And we had dozens of people who contacted my office afterwards and asked for information about the project so that they could replicate something similar in their communities. So again, I'm really thrilled about this collaboration. Delighted that the exhibit is here at San Rafael City Hall. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine. Welcome, Craig.
Hi, Mayor Kate, Council. Craig Verme, Assistant Library and Recreation Director. Just going to take a quick moment to thank everyone who participated and contributed to this project. I had a very small role in this. I had a very fun role as well. I was the, kind of the administrator that is just the staff liaison for the Public Art Review Board, which is new to the city. And I'm hoping that this is a really great reflection of some of the art projects that might come our way for review. So excited and thankful for this group that's put all this work in. I wanted to mention to you, Mayor Kate, there might be an opportunity for you to recommend a brief recess to take a quick look in the lobby at the artwork. If that's not enticing enough, there are some cupcakes out there as well. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here and being the scaffolding so that these young artists could really dig into these tough issues around fair housing. And it strikes me, the Public Art Review Committee, which you said is new. This is the second project. The first one was high school students that really looked at race and social justice. And here, these young artists are looking at fair housing. And our world is in great hands, knowing that we have these deep thinkers coming behind us. Absolutely yes to look at the art. And okay, we will eat some cupcakes. So we'll take a five-minute recess.
Mayor Kate? Sorry, may I first public comment?
Oh, we were so excited. Okay, okay. Just wait, just a moment. Please, though, don't let that dissuade you from making public comment on this exciting item. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this? Not seen in anyone? Is there anyone online?
I see no hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll take a recess. Thank you. Recess anyway. Okay, keep going. The first item on our agenda this evening is a permit improvement program and customer satisfaction survey. And I see Director Judasey and Don Jepson, our chief building official here. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm very excited to introduce this item. It's something that we've been working on for a long time, different phases of this customer service self-assessment. We did this, we retain Marin Builders Association to do an assessment of the customer service that we provide is something that's very important to us. And, you know, it's not a one-and-done type of thing. It's something that continues to evolve. As famous author and motivational speaker said once, it's an infinite game, and we'll continue to try to improve. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Don Jepson, who will give the presentation. And we also have representatives of the Marin Builders Association here to provide some words.
Hi, I'm Don Jepson, Chief Building Official. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight in front of the council and the mayor. I have a short slide presentation here to hit some of the highlights of the report that we were given. We did this report about four years ago and scored very well. And we've redid this report this past year and scored even better. Just a reminder of what we do. Building Department does enforcement of building codes, state codes for life safety codes, including mechanical, plumbing, electrical. It also includes accessibility and energy. We process about 5,000 permits annually, annually, 15,000 inspections. Since 2020, we've done about $400 million worth of construction and taken in about $12 million of revenue. We also collaborate with the review process with other departments like planning, health department, public works. The counter visits are shown on this pie chart. You can see most of the counter visits have to do with building plan checks, submittal comments or questions, and also inspection scheduling or questions, followed by questions around planning and project reviews. Our timeliness and professionalism, you can see that 80.9% respondents agree that we're very timely and professional. You can see this across the several types of interactions that were reported on, including building, engineering, plan review, inspections, and also resolving code violations. 80.2% of the respondents agreed that we provided services in the timeframes that we promised, which is can be very tricky and very hard to do. But I'm very pleased that we met those goals when we told them what their rough time estimates would be. A little less than 80% thought we provided quality customer service, either excellent or good. And I'm very proud of that with our staff. Over 80% was also very satisfied with our virtual type and remote type of services. We do virtual online where you can come to the counter. We do telephones and emails. We can have virtual meetings. So people that partake in that services thought we did excellent or very good on those. Here's a breakdown across those virtual meetings and phone calls by those interactions. And then we scored very high with the net per mortar score, which basically accounts for customer loyalty and satisfaction. So when we did this a few years ago, which was pretty high, we scored about 8.3%. This last year, we kind of knocked it out of the park at 34.7%, which I think is very unheard of in a government-type operation. And with that, if it pleases the council and the mayor, Rick and Casey would like to say a few words, our partners from the Builders Association.
Welcome, welcome, Rick. Welcome, Casey.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Casey Mizony, the manager of the Permit Improvement Program. And just as a reminder, we started our partnership with the city of San Rafael back in 2017 with our Phase One program. It started with a conversation with Paul Jensen, and he was eager to see how the department could assess themselves and how we could do better. And just as a reminder, the Permit Improvement Program is a multi-year program designed to improve the permit process for building professionals and property owners. And another goal is to reduce unpermitted work, which again will increase funding, which again will improve customer service. So I want to thank you for your continued support. It was the forward thinking of the Community Development Director, the staff at the city, and you council members that has brought us to today and the improvements of the customer service for your customers here in San Rafael. So I'm going to pass it off to Rick.
Evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Rick Wells. I'm the CEO at the Marin Builders Association. We represent 570 member firms. We've been in Marin since 1958. We're headquartered right here in San Rafael. As Don presented, Phase Two of the Permit Improvement Program, we continued to look at ways to improve the process, but really improve the experience for the customer. Because ultimately, what we're talking about with net promoter score is how likely is somebody to tell their neighbor or their colleague to go ahead and go through that process as opposed to avoid the permitting process and then avoid the safety, avoid the fees that come along with it. So Don mentioned that, and I'll talk about that in a second. The one thing about net promoter score, it's calculated by subtracting the number of respondents that were detractors away from the percentage of those that were promoters. So you have to score high in order to get a high score. This is, this is something that we worked with at our partners with the Marin Economic Forum. So as Don highlighted, the NPS score for Phase Two was plus 34.7. And that means 34 percentage points more promoters than detractors. In Phase One, the NPS was 8.3. So significant improvement has taken place. And I will say that we've done this type of analysis in other jurisdictions across Marin County, and by far, San Rafael has established itself as the gold standard. And the credit belongs to staff and the testament to the commitment that they have to the citizens of this community as partners, as opposed to anything else that they could be seen as. And, and that being said, it has truly been a pleasure to work with, with Don and Ally and the team here dating back to 2017. We look forward to continuing our work together. And I believe that the fact that you, as council, have a staff that is willing to take a close look at themselves and say, what are we doing right? And how can we improve is a testament to the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Casey. I'm sure we'll have, is now questions? Did you have more that you wanted to add?
I just had a special thanks.
Oh, wait, microphone.
Sorry. I just wanted to reiterate what Rick says. I would give a special thanks to staff, both past and present, that got us here. Without staff, we couldn't have come this far, and they support myself and Ally. So our staff is awesome. And now we can accept questions.
Okay, we'll start with questions. Vice Mayor, questions?
Well, I just want to congratulate you and also thinking about the previous council members as well that they were here to start the programs. This is amazing, like it's a huge jump, you know, in customer satisfaction. How are we going to promote this so people know about it? And maybe it will be easier for other neighbors to come and, you know, apply for permits?
I believe we'll post it on our website. And I also have been asked to talk to a couple of other jurisdictions for gate safety and on our building codes. So I can bring it up during those conversations also.
Great. Well, congratulations. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, questions?
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Director Judasey, as well as Rick and Casey for being here tonight. This is all good news. I have a question that moves more towards the concept that many of our Marin neighbors, the other municipalities in Marin, are starting to align more and more with ordinances that look similar to San Rafael's. Is there a scenario in the future as, you know, the other planning departments out there, as end of life is approaching for their systems? Is there a mutually beneficial opportunity for us to have a chargeback so that we can have a shared services and take advantage of what we're doing in a way that is either cost neutral or beneficial to the city's finances?
So having a regional system is one of those subjects that's very dear to my heart. A jurisdiction I came from before, we took county government, two cities, and the health department and combined it into one permitting system, including business licenses across those jurisdictions. We have talked internally with other building officials and jurisdictions, but nothing very formal. But I believe there's always opportunities to do that with the other jurisdictions. I know we've talked not too long ago with the Health District at Marin, and they also expressed interest in trying to partner or share. And if we can't share maybe the same system, maybe having pathways between the systems if we take in a restaurant review, that we're looking at the same documents as the Health District and we're signing off at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to add that.
Yeah, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
That we do, you know, the different community development departments have discussed how to, you know, combine efforts and coordinate and be consistent. And one example is just when we brought the commercial linkage fee forward in the presentation, like those types of things are things that we can, you know, try to develop consistency across all the different jurisdictions. And the same holds true for the customer service that we provide. In fact, when we, in 2020, when we were, you know, kind of sheltering in place, sheltering at home, and we, the city of Santa Fel implemented some online services almost immediately. And we were reached out to by the other jurisdictions to provide kind of presentations to help them kind of guide through that process and themselves create a better customer service experience. So there is opportunity there, and we're offering help whenever we can.
Thank you. I have one more question. Just to clarify one of the metrics, the term counter visits, is that inclusive of in-person, phone, virtual, or online interactions? How do we do a, what is counted as a counter visit?
I may defer to the Marin Builders, but I believe those are physical counter visits. I don't know if it also includes our virtual visits. Do you know, Rick, by chance?
I can speak to that. So the answer is yes. That, that does, that's physical visits versus we categorize email as an electronic visit. We also have phone calls in a separate category as well. So we try to, what we try to do is grasp what the interaction is, and then if there, we can find any kind of trends among those types of interactions, then we drill down a little further.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. Data is amazing. So that was great. So what's next in terms of the net, either evolution of the survey? Is there an area that you would like to have more feedback on in terms of, I guess it's sort of a dual question in terms of what the Marin Builders Association would like to sort of look at next? And as also, do you have an area that you would like to look at? And then the second part of that question is, even though their scores were so high, do you see areas of improvement to even have higher scores?
I'll start with the last question first. And absolutely, we're always looking to improve, and things change over time. And sometimes the things that you're doing now to really provide great customer service may not work in five or 10 years. So we're always looking at, you know, what can we do better to provide a better customer experience? And so just in terms of what's next, I'll pass it over to you, Don.
Sure. The builders made some recommendations and best practices, and I've looked at quite a few of those, and I think there are things that we can take from that and improve our processes with. But we're also faced with challenges. One of those challenges is we have a high turnover of staff, and we're also looking to go to a new permitting system. So we might have a little bit of a mini pause while we fill positions and train them and set up our new permitting system. A lot of things are based on that permitting system. It gives us a lot of flexibility and interconnectivity to different functions, like I mentioned in the Health District, that we currently don't enjoy. So we might have a little bit of a pause while we get these other game pieces in place. And then I think we'll see another progression of more outside thinking and innovative thinking and looking at other policies that was outlined in the report. One of those that I'm very interested in is the county is launching a bathroom and kitchen remodel permit that doesn't require any plans. It's basically over the counter, and it's also for a flat fee. And it relies a little heavier on inspectors to do a little more thorough job out in the field, but it doesn't require them to come in and submit plans. And oftentimes, those plans aren't necessarily very good anyway, so maybe it's something that we can accelerate and do. And so as soon as we get a little more data from the county, I might be interested in bringing that forward.
Great, thank you. I sort of have one more follow-on question to that. It's a little bit controversial, I think, potentially. Do you see AI playing a role in this going forward? When you talk about upgrading to new systems and having a permit process that, you're smiling. I have sort of a, I have a hypothesis around this. But in terms of the work that you're doing now, since it is so, you have to follow XYZ steps, do you see this being something that could be automated in the future?
I, um.
Go ahead.
I believe, I'm not crazy about AI per se, but I do believe we're doing plan checks very much like we did 100 years ago. The only difference maybe in the last couple of years, instead of looking at two-dimensional drawing on paper, we're doing a two-dimensional drawing on the CAD or on the screen, right? Just like architecture experienced 20 years ago with having computer-aided design, I think we need computer-aided plan review. And that might be some piece of AI, but I do think there's pieces that can be automated and give us a higher quality of plan review. And those are one of the things I'm very passionate about, along with regionalization or looking at sharing. So to answer your question, yes, I think there is.
I do think so, too. Thank you.
Great question. I just had a couple of them. I noticed in the report, it had said that it was being considered to survey annually the customers, I guess as it was. It seemed really frequent to me. I mean, could you speak to why it's a year, not two years? Give ourselves some breathing room to see how we're doing?
I think it's one of those subjects that we'll talk to the builders about. And I really kind of think ideally it would be once every code cycle, which is about every three years, three to four years.
Okay.
Kind of like we just experienced from 2017 or 2018 to today. But we'll work with our partners and find out what the best balance is for that.
And I really like that idea of tying it to a greater nexus, which is the building updates versus us trying to remember, because we have a lot of other things we're trying to do. Okay, that is great. I had noticed under long-term, you were talking about, and I got a little confused on this because you already talked about virtual meetings, and yet one of the long terms is to have set goals for online and face-to-face applications. I don't know if the goal is to have a number that you're trying to reach or what that was, because I was under the impression that you're already doing virtual. So why is it long-term or am I not understanding that item here?
I think we're looking at perhaps having additional services that would be virtual and perhaps also doing some. And perhaps also doing some, um, um, follow-up customer survey or, uh, customer surveys after they've experienced a virtual interaction with us, giving us what their, how they felt about their interaction that day. And I think that piece was going to be in the future.
Okay.
And the one thing I wanted to add to that is that, you know, we, before, um, the pandemic, we were offering a couple of days of over the counter reviews. And we've started talking about how to, um, how to blend in that type of a review, kind of in a virtual setting. Um, I think that's something that for us to think about in the future. Um, so part of that would be what we're talking about.
And Ally is correct. We don't, we do schedule meetings virtually with like the plan examiner, but I think we're looking to have more of an interaction with them online, like looking at the plans, looking at comments on the plans in real time, like you would do.
Like a Zoom call.
Yeah, like a Zoom call.
Yeah. No, that sounds like a great vision to have. And I noticed under best practices, now I understand, I wasn't sure how that fit into the report. So those, what you just said are things that we'll look at when we have the capacity to do it. And I was interested again, going on the same thing, the virtual inspections that you said Sonoma or Sonora, Sonoma is already doing that. So that sounds fantastic. And then I just say, there was one in there that really caught my eye called email etiquette. I was like, I can't wait to click that. And the link on the Monterey site, because that link to Monterey is broken. So I didn't get to learn about email etiquette in terms of permitting, but I was really interested in what that was. So we support that. That's just a FYI. And it's not our link that's broken. It's the county of Monterey's link that's broken. Yeah, it's not ours. It's the county of Mon- Monterey. Our links were good. Okay. Thank you. I'm sure there might be additional questions that come up. I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to comment on this item? Come on down, Mr. Vitari.
Good evening, City Council and presenters. My name is Al Vitari. I live in Gersel Park as a renter. In listening to your presentation, a few questions came to mind, one of which is, or assumptions I was making. And I'm not sure where to start, but let's just say I look at your customer base and your customer base, I'm guessing is either independent homeowners that are making modifications to their home and/or major builders that are building new projects that require, in, in some sense, your approval on their plans to ensure that the product they produce is of a quality that ensures safety for the persons who are going to reside in that building. One, I guess that's a question to you. And the other is the fee that you, uh, charge for that, which enables the city to do. And I'm not quite sure what you use the fees for. I, I assume it's to run the city services. What I wasn't clear about is in the objectives that you listed for the survey, was it to, encourage people to not avoid your services, uh, because you are now a customer friendly service? Or is it to change the service to provide only those essential components that are necessary to ensure the goal of providing a safe and secure environment for the persons living in that building? Those are my two questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Yes, Jack, come on down.
I'm a real estate broker and I have been dealing with planning and building in this city since 1978. And based on what I heard tonight, all I can do is applaud you for the improvements that you've made. I started dealing with Paul back in 1979. He then went on to other things and came back here. And that guy was fabulous. So if he recommended getting involved with you, it must've been good. I thank you for what you've done and congratulate you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone. Anyone online like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
I will close the public comment and, uh, come back to the question. So who is a customer? If you can speak to that. Fees, uh, it's kind of embedded in there. What are they used for? I think, which is an important part. And then what is the objective of improving it, which I know you said at the beginning, but I think it's always good. It's a nice way to close out the item. So if you could speak to those three items.
So we service, um, life safety for all our customers, including multifamily, single-family, commercial, um, industrial. Um, we enforce the minimum life safety codes that are given down to us by the California, um, state and, um.
So the, um, essentially what the objective is, um, as we're serving, um, the community members, including new residents and contractors and developers, that our primary objective is to, A, ensure that we're providing the best customer experience that we can. Um, because with that great customer experience, um, the word gets around and uh, people talk about how easy it is to come to the counter and they're more inclined to get permits when permits are needed. And as a result, we're able to inspect and provide an assurance that we have safe buildings, um, within the city. So there's kind of a trickle down effect of, you know, A, provide a great customer experience. And as a result, we end up with better life safety in the city.
And the fees, the fees go to support the department and those, um, reviews and inspections. I think, um, it used to be that we were kind of seen as a cash cow given to the general fund, but really those monies go to support all the staff and the plan examiners and the third parties we have to provide that service. And, um, I think we do a really good job, uh, fiscally in providing those very efficiently and affordable.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well, great. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for comments and their motion. Vice Mayor, comments?
Um, yeah, again, congratulations. That is a huge achievement. Um, I, I guess an opportunity could be as we are looking into electrifying buildings and going more sustainable. Maybe have like a lens of, um, sustainability for the department and maybe how the department could be like a, an educational po- point when somebody maybe is coming to do something that, because there will be the enforcement versus the educational part. So I'm not sure if you have thought about that or how we can, you know, move towards that. But, um, I just want to congratulate you. Thank you so much, Marin Builders Association for the partnership and, uh, keep it up. I think it's wonderful. So I agree. I know in the past it used to be much harder. So, uh, so this is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Yes, thank you for the collaboration, working together on this. Uh, that's the only way ever what you could bring everybody up. So I really appreciate that. Um, I was randomly, when you're at the farmer's market, everyone comes up to you. So randomly I was told I was a secret shopper at your counter and at the permitting and they loved it. And they just went on, I was like, you know, you hold your breath. You're not quite sure what you're going to hear next. And they just, they were so happy. And, and it was somebody who's had a lot of experience, who has seen a lot of change. So that was really very, very positive. Um, and then I've also heard from community members who have done both small and large projects that will always say, I had no problems getting my permit. I just couldn't get my counters. Like the, from the, the supply side was really the delay. And, and so it was good to know it wasn't happening on our side. But projects we know these days take a really, really long time. Um, so I'm glad we're not that block in the process, um, and getting those projects moving forward. Because I think that's really critical as, as our need for development is continuing to increase. That permit process is going to have to keep up with that demand. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you very much for the report. Thank you, Marin Builders Association for coming out tonight. I heard a comment earlier about how our staff is able to, I'm going to say it in my own words, but able to reflect and look toward, um, being accountable to the highest standard. I think that surveying is a very important step in what we do to find ways to improve. We may have a belief, whether it's deep down or right on the surface, that we're always doing the very best thing. And I think surveying provides more empirical evidence of what we could improve. So, uh, irrespective of the wonderful score and what score we hopefully might get in the future, I, I'll continue to encourage that we do the surveying. And, uh, and thank you to Marin Builders for helping us, uh, achieve this score this year and, and improve our, our way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add on, we can't do this in a vacuum. So Marin Builders, thank you for showing up. And I, the Marin Economic Forum was part of it as well. So you have a lot of voices in the room. We have strong and smart voices in our room, but really casting that net really wide. And I agree that having the data to see where we are and then what we can build upon, I, I mean, it really sets us up for the years to come. So, uh, this is great stuff. And I really like how you had the short, medium, long. So it was also looking out forward. What do we do with this information? How do we continue to build on it? And it wasn't just, okay, we're good for now and we're going to rest on our laurels on this amazing score, which you could do for a moment and then you can start looking out. So, um, so thank you. Congratulations. Thank you to your team. We know a lot of hard work went into this. Um, and there is an action on this item. It, uh, so I request a motion, please.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, accept the Marin Builders Association Marin Economic Forum's Permit Improvement Program Phase Two Report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, it ends, Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries four zero. Thank you so much. We had cupcakes and then this. We are just, we are so ready for the fiscal year 2022, 23 year and budget amendments. So thank you. See, Director Navazio joining us. Sean Plate, nice to see you. Welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Um, item before you this evening is, as it's noted, the fiscal year 22, 23 year and, uh, budget amendments. Specifically, the item seeks council, um, authorization for some, um, essentially, uh, some budget amendments that would technically be cleanup as part of our year-end process that, um, staff has identified with the auditors, um, as we're in the middle of, of the audit. Um, these are detailed in attachment one in the staff report. Um, and Sean Plate, our finance manager, is going to walk through at least the highlights of those, uh, adjustments for you. Then we can answer any questions you could have. Uh, I might take this opportunity also to, um, speak briefly to, uh, gentleman had public comment, uh, earlier in the evening regarding, um, I believe a table in the report that shows uh, expenditures exceeding, uh, revenues by a little over $11 million. And that's a result of essentially the budget, assuming, um, spending down available fund balances, i.e. revenues that have been collected in prior years. Examples would be, uh, ARPA grant funds, uh, some of the Measure E projects where we've been collecting money and then spending them. Um, the council will see a full presentation of the year-end financial results, budget actual and fund balances. I believe at the first or second meeting in November, when we're here to, uh, share with the council and the public, the audited, uh, financial results, uh, for the city. Uh, but for this evening, we're focusing on some of the, uh, cleanup items that we're asking the council to consider. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sean, uh, Plate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Um.
All right.
Michael.
Here we go. All right. Let's start off with the fiscal year 2023 year-end budget amendments. Uh, and I can't really do that without giving you some preliminary results. Uh, little caveat, these do include the budget adjustments that we are requesting tonight. Uh, these figures that I'm presenting, uh, so we're looking at in general fund revenues, projected results of about $230,000, higher than our adjusted budget. Uh, if you'll remember back in, in mid-year, we, uh, we adjusted our budget, uh, by $1.5 million for increased sales tax, uh, higher than expected sales tax, uh, that we had received. And that was mainly due to a, a prior period correction of, uh, the county pool that saw the, the city net over a million dollars. That was subsequently recalculated. Some of that was clawed back. And then we've had, you know, some, some macroeconomic headwinds. We didn't actually hit that, but it was made up in other areas, namely property taxes, also, uh, TOT taxes, hotel taxes also, uh, outperformed. Um, going over to the general fund expenditures, the, the theme for this year has really been, uh, personnel savings. We've had personnel savings this year of over $5 million. And, uh, the reason that it doesn't show in this projected result number is because it does include the, uh, the amendment that's, will be proposed to you tonight, um, to repurpose, uh, $5 million, that, that $5 million. So that leaves us with a, a $664,000 favorable, uh, budget variance, um, between revenues and expenditures and drawing down our general fund balance by $6 million. Now, that includes a, a large one-time item of, uh, the Sam Quentin, San Quentin Pump Station Repair Project, which is seven and a quarter million dollars. So if you take that out, you're really looking at a $1.2 million, uh, net result in the general fund for the year. And of that 1.2 million, we are going to ask that 338,000 get assigned to the emergency reserve to keep us up at that 10% level, uh, by policy. And that any remainder, um, go towards be assigned to the Pickleweed Park Field Renovation Project. We have a hundred percent grant match. Uh, we were able to put 3.4 million to that grant match last year. And this will probably get us about there, um, with the project kicking off soon, I believe. Uh, some other results I wanted to note, parking and childcare, these, uh, have been slow to rebound from the pandemic. And they really, both of them in the second half of the year have really shown positive results. Parking in, in the last few months are showing revenues 20 to 25% above what they were doing at this time last year. And childcare really just had a banner summer program that really kind of put them over the top at year end. So, uh, so really hoping to see the light at the end of the tunnel there, because they've been struggling over, over this, this, this time. Um, also I wanted to, to highlight the, we will be showing kind of outsized investment returns of $600,000. And that's really clawing back some of that, uh, $2 million loss that we recorded the last year, the unrealized loss, uh, due to the interest rate activity in the bond market. Uh, and now on to the budget amendments. So in the general fund, uh, we are looking to revise transfers in. We're asking to forego the transfer from the gas tax fund to the general fund of $650,000. Given the outperformance of revenues and, uh, the needs within the gas tax fund, we're really seeing that, uh, it's better to keep that capacity within the general, the gas tax fund, uh, for projects. Um, aside from that, there's a small item of moving $11,000 from the cannabis fund to the general fund to fund the remainder of the Safe Team Pilot Project that wasn't covered by the initial funding source of the opioid, uh, settlement dollars. Then, uh, on to general fund, uh, expenditures, that's where we're reallocating. So we're reducing that by the $5 million and then adding it back into transfers out for capital, for immediate infrastructure needs in the liability fund and capital projects fund. And then you have the large item I mentioned earlier, the, the San Quentin Pump Station Project. This has already been approved. This is just the funding mechanism to take that pile of money from ARPA in the general fund and move it over to the stormwater fund where that project is held. Um, and then lastly, we have, we do this transfer annually. We take, uh, per council direction. We do take one-third of our Measure E transaction and use tax and subtract the debt service and move any remainder over into the essential facilities capital project fund. And this year that number is about $600,000. So aside from that, in the other funds, these are detailed out in the attachment. Um, and I've already spoken to the larger items, uh, about 12.8 million in revenues increased and, and 1.2 million in expenditure increases there. And so with that, uh, we will recommend that you approve the resolution adopting amendments, authorizing appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 22 and 23 and take any questions.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. We'll start with questions. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much for, uh, for the hard work to, uh, reviewing this and also working with the auditors. So I, I know it's always challenging. Um, I just have a question around the parking revenue. It's nice to see that they are bouncing back and also the childcare, um, the preschool. Um, but I was looking at the, the revenue that you're mentioning, is it from like a parking? Is it from like a parking fees from the parking garage? Or is it from ticketing? Because I know that sometimes, I don't know how good it is to increase revenues there.
Well, it's part of it, right? It's actually across the board. There's more street parking, you're going to have more citations, you know? It's, it's just part of it. But really, it is garage, street and citations altogether.
Altogether.
Combined, yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out, is it 50/50, 60/40?
Yeah, we just started taking it, everybody, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you, Sean and Director Navazio for the, the report. A couple of questions. 10% emergency reserve. This is something that, when I joined the council, this has already been in place. And I'm hearing that we are going to obviously maintain that reserve as a guidance or as a policy going forward. Do we feel that 10% is a sufficient amount for a city of our size?
I'll take a stab at that. I think this is one of the first or second issues that we discussed upon my arrival here. And I think it is appropriate to review that periodically and, and review it. I would say that 10% is kind of within the, the band, if you will, of what you typically see in what's recommended by groups like GFOI, Government Finance Officer Association. But it could be anywhere from 5% to 25%. It really depends not so much on the size of the, of the city. But in my opinion, it has as much to do with sort of the volatility and the certainty versus the uncertainty in your revenue projections and your expenditure budget. So as I told staff, and if we knew exactly what the, what the budget was going to look like and we hit the numbers every year, you wouldn't need a reserve. But if you have a history of volatility or unpredictability, then you want to build in the buffer that will allow you to address things like economics cycles without having to go in and retool the budget. As long as you have a component of the policy to restore those reserves if, if you need to do them. So there are a lot of factors that go into it. 10% is, I'd say actually on the low end of what you would typically see, but it's, it's not out of the norm. But some, an area that we will be looking at and potentially engaging the council with that discussion.
Thank you. And then with respect to the amendments that we're seeing at this point, I remember doing amendments last year. And this feels like it's in line. The biggest difference, I think, is seeing a pretty big expenditure with ARPA. Obviously, we approved it and it's the right thing. Is this something that we would think goes into amendments if it's consistent with what council had, had directed? Or we think that this is just a one-off that, you know, we'll, we'll just see it, you know, this time next year if we have another major expenditure like that?
We'll take a stab at that again. So if it's specific to the ARPA, this is probably the end of it because I think the city has expended the lion's share of it. And this is maybe the last piece of it. There may be other, you know, examples that are similar where we have council direction but don't have the actual dollar amount yet or may not know the actual amount of, of a grant that, that we may be anticipating. But I don't anticipate this level of budget adjustments coming in at year-end going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you, and thank you for the updates. Two questions. In terms of the $5 billion personnel savings, I always look at budgets like we are, we were expected to spend that amount, right? And so sometimes it's a gift, right? But other times, it's, it's to the detriment of we were ready to spend it, but now we're short, right? And we know we've been trying to hire in a number of our different areas. And I'm assuming, there is a question here. I'm assuming that if we had fully staffed, we wouldn't have had that savings.
That, that's correct.
Right? So, so we, we're building, we get the, yes, it's good, we, we saved it and we get to spend it in other areas. But we also wanted to be staffing. So it's, I have a hard time thinking of it as like a, it's always good to have that. And I'm wondering if there's another way of thinking about that savings per se. I don't, yeah, it's a little bit hard of a, it's sort of hypothetical in terms of a.
Do you mean, Councilmember Kurtz, in the articulation of it? And we call it savings. Is that part of what you're saying? It's like the vernacular that we're using? It's not really savings.
It's not really savings because we're hurting, right? As a staff.
It's a, it's a vacancy. It's, it's the impact of having a vacancy. So in that regard.
Right. So I guess it is just sort of more of a terminology piece and a clarity. It's not like we were tucking away to save $5 million so that now we can allocate it differently. Ideally, we would have spent, we budgeted to spend it.
Yeah, I would say even just adding just a little bit, it's really service levels that we were not able to provide because the budget funds, yeah, staff, but also the provision of services to the community and without the staff. Because there's a budgetary savings, but there's actually a deficit in our service levels.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, not really, yeah, more of a common.
There's a saying that I'd rather have a good reason for being over budget than a bad reason for being under budget. You don't necessarily get a gold star.
Exactly. All right, great. Thank you. And then the second question is around, so absolutely, I'm really happy to see that we finally found Pickleweed to be able to get that going. And capital improvements, we always should be funding something in that because we know with an aging city and infrastructure, there's always going to be a need for that. But what else is on sort of our list of where other areas we could consider funding? Because those are choices.
Do you mean other than, the San Quentin Pump Station funds have already been approved? Do you mean the other capital improvement projects?
Other projects, other things. If we did not, if we did, if we didn't have Pickleweed, where else would we start looking at of things that we would consider?
We'd look at the capital improvement plan that was approved. And then, you know, that we'd use those same criteria. So that's what we did in the recommendation for this transfer as we went to the Public Works Director and said, what are the next highest unfunded projects on the list that have the, meet the majority of the criteria for that plan? So I don't know if we know what the, what the ones further down the, the line were. But these are the most critical infrastructure and public safety projects that didn't have a funding source that made the absolute most sense to recommend.
Great.
At this point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, another question?
Yeah, thank you for entertaining one more question. For every depreciating asset we have, do we have a fund to replace that asset?
So I'm, we're asking the same question. I think there's a fund to replace it. The question is whether there's sufficient funds within that fund to replace it. And it would not be unique to San Rafael to have a shortfall in the replacement for your aging infrastructure.
I'll just add that I think that we've talked in the past and, and plans in the future to talk more about the, the lack of funding, particularly in the storm drain and looking at the master plan and the, like, the cost of each one of these upwards to $7, $8 million is, that's a lot to fund. So it's a great question and something we're going to continue to look at.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And just to maybe comment on master plans generally that helps us at least indicate what the exact needs are so that we can hopefully seek grant money for those types of needs. And for the, the question wasn't intended to be a gotcha, like, oh, we're short on the funds. I think it's, I think it's just to let the community also know with that question that we're trying to be responsible to not just buying an asset and hope that it stays online as long as possible before it has to go away. I think of, of most importance to me, especially around first responders, is that their, their equipment is being funded as much as we possibly can to make sure that as they're approaching, approaching end of life, that those can be replaced. So I appreciate you taking the question.
Thank you. And my colleagues asked the exact same question. So I'm just going to ask them again, just so you know. Wasn't the only person. So Councilmember Kurtz, I also gave me a little heartburn about the word savings. It's not savings. I call it something different. That was, my question was going to be, what else could you call it? See, I actually was going to frame it like a question. What else can you call it besides savings? Because that really stuck out at me. And then Councilmember Hill had talked about the emergency reserve. And I want to give kudos to former mayor Gary Phillips because he was really instrumental in, in bringing that online. Though there were a lot of discussions and it might be time to review it. And there's a lot of pros and cons and very nuanced conversation, having been a part of that conversation back then. And the fact that we can at least, I won't say at least, but we are full, we are funded to that 10% is important because it wasn't always that way. So I guess there's not really a question in there. So we look for, I'm trying to think how I could rephrase it, but you know, I'm just going to leave it at that and open it up to public comment and see if there are any questions from our community. Jack, you want to come? No, he, he asked his question.
I'll see how it's answered.
Okay, okay. Anyone else in the chambers have a question on this item? Like to provide input? Not seen anyone? Is there anyone online who'd like to provide comment on the budget amendments?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for additional comments. And then a motion, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, no more comments. Again, I appreciate that, all your hard work and good luck.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
No, thank you. Love, love digging into the details. So appreciate it and, and look forward to the next report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
Well, I will just say it's good to see you, Sean. And again, this is a, a long welcome to you, Director Navazio. Thank you for joining our city and taking the, the big deep dive in the first several months you've been here to be able to come before us tonight and present very cogent results. I know this is not just you, it's an entire department. But thank you for joining our city. Appreciate it.
I concur. I think it's your first presentation to the council, so welcome, Sean. Always a pleasure. So nice to see the team here and great work. With that, I will accept a motion on this item.
I'll do the motion. Recommended action, adopt the resolution adopting the amendments to the City of San Rafael Budget for Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 for the purpose of confirming authorized appropriations and transfers.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Edens Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.